Thank you, and Mr. Mayor, if I could invite some of the members of our team that have been working on this down also, I had told them we'd all sit here at the table and see if we could work together on this, and I saw a few members up there, I'm not sure if I have them all, I think Barbara Campo and Diana Hamilton and Carol Reynolds may all be here if they'd like to come down, just members of our team.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir, and would you ladies like to introduce yourselves?
I'm Carol Reynolds.
Barbara Campo.
And I'm Diana Hamilton.
All right, and Mayor and Commissioners, the other members of our team that helped me work on this were Todd Kacharsky and Dr. Cliff Smith from our group, Andrew Foley was involved, John Moran, John Simon, Mary Ann Servian, Denise Cowell, and Forrest Shaw, all participated with us as we went through this. In summary, essentially what we did was we went back pursuant to the City Commission Directive of June 2, 2008, and at that time, there had been a lot of discussion, numerous meetings and so forth, and actually a recommendation by the Commission to modify language in the Downtown Master Plan 2020, and that revision was supposed to be related to landscaping and green space. Additionally, we had another discussion with the Commission on October 5, 2009, where the Commission directed staff to go back and work on the downtown policies, the green space policy document. So pursuant to those two directives, I assembled a small working group, and we decided to, you know, see what we could do. The main issue that came up, or what I think really prompted the initial discussion of the policies, was a small restaurant, a Brazilian restaurant over here on the corner that was getting ready to expand, and there'd been a lot of discussion about the approval process and whether it was too stringent, not stringent enough, and so forth. That coupled with the original discussion of June 2, 2008, just told staff that we needed to go ahead and look at both of these documents and see what needed to be changed, and that was the purpose of the group. We got together in short sessions, probably about two to three hours at a time, basically once a month. We tried to do it in three months, we didn't quite make our cutoff, I like to work with small groups and hopefully move quickly and accomplish something, but this was a very active group, and it took us a few more months than what I would have liked, but I think what we came up with was a policy and some recommendations that are generally supported by the group, and I say generally supported, I feel we had a general consensus on the idea of developing a downtown green space plan. We had much discussion about much of the actual language, the specific word-by-word language, and that of course is very important, but again, I think that as a group, we all bought off on the concepts that are going to be presented today, and I'll try to run over those as best I can. I think I'll start with the downtown green space policies, that's the next thing, I believe that's pages two, three, and four, five, and six in your packets. And the main changes to that particular area, the first one falls on page three, where under managing the urban forest number four, A4, you'll see that we've inserted language that canopy trees are preferred in the public right-of-way, and that's something I think we've heard from the Commission, and I think we've heard from the public generally, that if we're working in the public right-of-way and there's the ability to utilize a canopy tree, that that'd be the preferred tree. So that's one of the first changes that we made. The second change really is on page four, and it deals with streetscape design under section four, and it talks about the development of a downtown green space plan, and you can see that we've gone through that particular plan, how we would develop it, and I'll tell you a little about it right now. We felt that we needed to develop a green space plan that would provide recommendations related to increasing the green space in pervious areas, but also balancing that with the need for the active pedestrian walking and seating areas. And I'm going to show you some pictures in a minute and tell you those, while those sound like they might be opposed or things that don't work together, they actually can work together in the same area, we believe, as we really walked around. We talked about number one, phasing this particular plan, if you accept that, starting with the downtown DIT area, and then expanding that as funding becomes available. And that was one of the points of contention, is, you know, how wide should this policy go? I know Ms. Cowell, she was concerned about Burn Square and that they have some unique properties over there and unique areas in terms of their sidewalks and so forth that are narrower because of the age of that particular area, and I think that's why this group, we said, "Let's start with some of our most important streets in the downtown, see if we can get some of this increased green space in pervious area and work our way from there." We think it should encourage protection, retention, expansion, addition of in-ground planting beds where feasible, and those words are important, where feasible, but certainly in-ground planting beds seem to promote a lot more environmental benefits than maybe other types of, oh, if you have the pots or different planters and so forth. We also, of course, are number three, promoting retention of existing trees and planning, again, new canopy trees where possible. So if we do have to do some work, we can get the canopy trees in, that's the idea, I believe. We want to recommend the removal of impervious surface in certain areas, but with key caveats, where that removal will not impact existing parking functions, and where it won't impede future expansion of outdoor restaurant seating or other approved outdoor commercial functions. And again, that's where we get into this balancing act, and I'll show you a few pictures of what I mean by that in a minute, I believe. Number five says the plan should encourage the use of color through the use of seasonal high-impact flowers, a variety of colored foliage and ornamental trees, and I think the whole group felt that some splashes of color are really important, we want to stay with Florida-friendly type vegetation and so forth, but we also want something that can give us a little bit of splash of color here and there. Number six, in narrow and limited areas, the plan should allow for hanging plants and above-ground planters and pots that are of an agreed-upon standardized design. Again, we recognize that everywhere in the downtown area, we're not going to be able to create in-ground planters, but we want to leave open some possibilities of some of these other types of planters and pots if possible. And then number seven is just that the landscape areas should provide for irrigation and utilize reclaimed water whenever available. The next important section is on page five, and it's section five, and it talks about conversion of existing green space areas, and this may be one of our hardest areas that we really grappled with, is, you know, this is the day-to-day of what should staff consider when reviewing a request to convert existing green space or pervious areas to hardscape? So you have one of these restaurants that maybe wants to expand their particular seating area, and it's always a difficult balance, and one we wrestled with the most, I think. But I think we came up with eight very workable standards that I think staff can administer, and I think we can make, hopefully, good reasoned decisions and still come out with a good product. The first is that the request should be the minimum request to make reasonable commercial use of the public space right-of-way, and again, that's a judgment call, what's reasonable commercial use and minimum request, I think that goes on a case-by-case basis based on the area you're working with. Two, that it should be consistent with our downtown green space plan. Three, that all reasonable efforts are made to retain and protect existing trees, and I think most people have always done that, staff certainly always felt strongly about that. Number four, that we require the applicant to improve the remaining pervious areas by planning appropriate new landscaping that's consistent with the downtown green space plan, and that we may require some flowers, colored foliage, and ornamental trees. Again, if you're going to go into an existing area that's been pervious and do some paving, what you have remaining, we want you to improve and bring that up, and we're going to have, once we, if you accept the idea of a downtown green space plan, we'll have an actual drawn plan that can tell us where we're trying to get to, and so, you know, part of your expansion is to go ahead and put a little investment into the remaining area there. Again, five is just encouraging retention of in-ground planting beds where possible and using measures such as raised borders to minimize damage to those areas. We also want that the remaining areas to be irrigated and reused water again when possible, and that we may request the applicant to consider, and number seven, raised planters and above-ground pots if there's not a way to improve the in-ground planting beds. And number eight is that staff should encourage a hardscape to include pervious pavers when possible. We had a lot of discussion about that language also, as I recall, but we did find that not everywhere are pervious pavers possible downtown, you know, you have to have a certain type of base, we have so many utilities downtown, places will work, places they won't, so we need to, and we're going to be, staff is going to be flexible to different types of materials that are utilized, we want to be that way. So those are really the main changes to the downtown policy itself, and before I go into the master plan, and I am going to switch over with you a second, I want to use the overhead here for a second, so my apologies.
No, I knew that.
You knew that.
I knew that.
Just so I can show you a couple examples, again, this group was very active, we went out and walked around, we wanted to see what, you know, what are the field conditions as I tell you about this, and this may give you some ideas, if I could go to the overhead. This is one area, this is down along Coconut and First Street, and again, these are just ideas, I'm not saying that these are absolutes, you know, we're going to have to do the plan, but we wanted to make sure that we could show some examples of some opportunities we have. You know, this is, again, a city parking lot here, you see, we have all this shell area, we see this as a great opportunity for some improved landscaping in a much more beautiful Sarasota downtown, something like that. Another one I've tabbed here is an example, might be an area along Orange and First Street, I'm sorry, quit moving that, Orange and First Street, this would be on the east side of the First Financial Building, you can see this is orange here. You know, we have what's probably not a real lovely area here, and there may be some opportunities to either expand these areas or maybe even connect these, we actually have a relatively wide sidewalk here, not a lot being done with this particular area, so if you looked at it and say, you know, do we have opportunities for more green space downtown that would really ultimately get us that greener look and more environmentally friendly, I think we do. If you don't mind, I'll show you a few more, because this really stood out to me as we went along, some different opportunities. This particular area, here we go, again, maybe a possibility, this is a brick bulb out at northwest corner of Central Avenue and First Street. Again, we looked and said, in some of these areas, there might be some opportunities to either remove some bricks and actually put some planting beds in and so forth, or again, maybe we'll use some type of a raised planters situation. Some of these areas have been thought out and put into our other planning, so it does, you know, take a little bit of a change in thinking, but again, certainly possibilities. Here's one of my favorite areas, this is nice-looking areas along First Street, about 1266 First Street, I think it's Coconut here, but you can see some of these areas here, we said there might be some opportunities to do something. Now, this is a relatively narrow sidewalk, so an area like this would present a little challenge, but I think if you envision maybe a rectangular raised planter or something along some of these areas and think how that might improve that look, we think it's something that could be done.
And the removal of that pole.
I was going to say, the pole looks like it could be painted too or removed. Yeah. Okay, here is another area that we found along Main Street, again, that, you know, might be an opportunity for some raised rectangular planters along here, there's also some big areas here, now, I believe this is actually an ADA ramp, a handicap ramp coming right along in here, so might not have a lot of opportunities, but again, an area like that might be a possibility. We also talked about some areas like this, and part of these are fall actually into some of the things that the DIT is going to do, but we were actually talking in some of these areas that there might be an opportunity to square some of these existing areas off, a lot of these have kind of an L-shaped on either end of them, and there may be some opportunities to do some work in some areas like this. We also are having some areas where specifically we've been talking about the benches, do they make sense in those areas, and, you know, so that may be some opportunities that we could come up with. And finally, an area along Zenith, I think is my last picture, but again, an area like this where, you know, we, again, just have all this cement, perhaps some type of work between these to connect some of these areas and so forth, might be a possibility. So in terms of this idea of a downtown master green space plan, that is what we were thinking about, and as we walked, I think we came up with, embarrassed, I don't remember what the count was, but there were-
We need to pause here just for a second and extend the meeting past 4:30, so is there a motion to extend the meeting?
Move to extend until 5 o'clock.
Second?
Second.
Move to second and extend until 5 o'clock, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Mayor votes yes, true unanimously.
You guys are really interested in this, that's good.
Yeah.
No, we're trying to finish.
Anyway, I think we, just on a quick walk, we identified something like 22 areas, it seemed like prime areas, very easy areas to go in and do some work on. Of course, funding, we have to talk about funding, something like this doesn't, you know, come overnight, but we've got a couple things that are working right now that I think help us leverage some of this, the DIT is already working on some of the existing area right now and how they're going to re-landscape that. I think we've got some real opportunity right now to relatively cheaply get somebody on board to help us develop this downtown master plan, and we didn't want to go forward with that before we came to the Commission and talked to you, but I have talked with Bill Hallissey, and we are going to propose in the CIP budget upcoming, some monies from the existing streets and highway funds to perhaps work on this, and then our suggestion's going to be each year to put a little money into some of this downtown, and over time, we're going to get there, and it's not going to take a huge amount of money, we suspect that the actual plan itself for getting a landscape architect to help us with this and some of the legwork we've already done, we believe will come in well under $20,000, it might not even be that much. And what we'd probably like to ask the Commission to do as we go forward in the CIP is maybe consider going 25 or, you know, $25,000 to $50,000 a year based on the economy each year, and let's work on some of these spaces, and eventually, over time, we're going to have both a beautifully landscaped downtown, and there's also going to be areas where the restaurants can still expand, but overall, we're looking at an increase in the amount of pervious area and the planting beds, and better landscape materials overall, and I think if we look at that again, I think that we can get there with both ways. The next thing I'm going to deal, that's all I had in terms of the policies and procedures, the next thing I did want to talk to you about is the actual master plan itself, the downtown 2020 master plan, and I provided you three different pages that are important, I provided you the original text that, you know, seemed to promote a lot of controversy back in 2008, and we had numerous meetings on, I provided you a copy of the deleted text, and then I provided you a copy of the new text, and that's on page nine, and I'm going to go ahead and concentrate on that new text, and I think that probably this downtown master plan language probably got as much discussion as anything in our group, and maybe where we're furthest apart, because there was just a lot of controversy as to specific language and so forth. Myself, I looked at the principles in here, and I look at the policies that we came up with, revisions, and I think they mesh together well, and I think they're pretty understandable in terms of where staff actually administers it, but, you know, that's why I have these other folks here, they can tell you if they have other feelings. But the policy, basically, we amended to say that green space, as you can see, we talked about the good environmental and economic advantages that it has, and this language was very, I think, really talked about a lot, it said, "And is generally preferred over hardscape," and there was, people wanted a lot of different language there, but we ultimately came up with the words generally preferred over hardscape, and the plantable areas should be retained wherever possible, and new landscape areas shall be added that are consistent with the downtown green space plan. We also added language that it's important to promote commercial and pedestrian vitality, and in appropriate areas, additional hardscape may be added, subject to meeting the requirements of the downtown green space policies in this plan. And then you can see our different principles, and I won't go through all those, but again, landscaping, shade trees, green space, breaking up hardscape, increasing outdoor cafe area and balance it with enhanced onsite landscaping, number four, again, this idea of how do we accommodate some of the commercial interests out there also, and five, again, is the in-ground planting beds, six is if we do some new bulb outs, that they're consistent also. So I really think that's the core of what this group talked about, again, I think it makes sense, I think it's something that we can administer on a more fair basis than the existing language that staff has been working with, and with that, I think I'll turn it over to my committee members if they have any additional short comments they'd like to make, and we'll take questions if that works for you, Mayor.
Sure.
Okay, please. Do you want to start?
I'd just like to say that I recommend the, or I support the recommendations we came up with, I think they respond to the questions that a lot of citizens asked back in 2007, and I think it answers what they were asking for. Go ahead, Barbara.
It was a pleasure to serve on this committee, I felt free to express my feelings-
The microphone's over, just a little-
Okay, is that okay?
Yep.
Yeah, it was a pleasure to serve on this committee, and we all worked very well together, there were times, as Tim pointed out, we did disagree on various issues. I can't wait to see all of this come about, because you have made some really fantastic decisions with regard to the bulb outs, the roundabouts, the parking garage, there's going to be a terrific new energy here in town, it's ready to burst, and I think the icing on the cake is this, this will make it all just sing. People will want to come here, they will want to have a good time, people of all ages, but most important thing is they'll want to come back, and it's because of all of this going together, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll say this, I, there are many aspects of this that I do agree with, and I will tell you that working in a room with Tim Litchett is a pleasure, and it was a pleasure working with my fellow committee members, that when I hear you speak, the energy and the excitement that he brings to this, I understand that we have the same goals, and I believe the goals that we all have is that we want a more beautiful downtown, that beautification is our true goal here. There are aspects of the language with which I truly disagree, and I have signed up to speak, and I'll discuss that with you later. When he showed you those first five examples, I would go to work on those examples tomorrow for you, if I could, to make them more beautiful, because they are almost all of the vantage points in our city, places that you would drive down, when you drive down Main Street and you see that long strip there beside Harshman's Building on Orange Avenue, that's one of the very first views you get of our downtown proper, our middle, that big section of downtown, it's very unattractive, and it can be made very beautiful, and I agree that beautification is very important, but as I say, I do have some remarks I'll make later, I truly did enjoy my experience, and I hope that will continue, and it doesn't give me great pleasure to disagree with this group, but I will say I haven't. Well, sir, you know, I think it's my responsibility to question-
It's all right.
-to ask questions and to delve further into things, I take it very seriously, sir, very seriously.
Thank you.
Go ahead and hear comments now if they're signing up. Because we don't have much time left.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, can't she speak now?
That's what we asked her to do. We have, we have people signed up, I just wondered if there were any other questions that we wanted to- I was just going to say, in the interest of time, they're sitting here, if they signed up to speak, I'd like to do that so we can finish by five.
Okay, we'll come back, Diana Hamilton is first, Coot Segal is second, Jude Levy is third.
I don't think it's fair to have me go ahead of people who signed up before me.
I have a list here, they're, that's the way I got them, that's the way I'm going to read them.
I don't think so, I turned mine in last. Okay, I just want to be fair to other people who sit here to wait. I'm happy to speak, it's up to you, sir. All right. Ah, the first language I'd like to question in this is a simple sentence, "Green space is generally preferred over hardscape." I want you to consider, what is hardscape? What do we use it for? It's people's space, so do we really mean to rewrite our master plan and suggest that green space in our downtown is preferred over people's space? I don't think so. Now, when we talk about the green space plan, I will suggest to you, I think that was the actual best work that our group did, and when I said to you earlier that those initial five examples that Tim showed you, absolutely, I would get right in there and start digging holes and planting things, that's what I do, by the way, I'm a gardener, and that's what I spend my days doing, is beautifying and working with plants to make our world more beautiful. However, since our last meeting, I've gone to other sections of our city, other parts of our downtown, Rosemary District I mentioned earlier, Palm Avenue, areas like that, and I think to myself, we continue to focus on Main Street, and we want to spend some money on Main Street, we've spent a ton of money on Main Street, and over the past 10 years since Dewaney wrote those words implying that we had a chaos of planting in downtown, that was the honest truth, and that has not changed, we still have a plethora of mulch beds, the trees have grown up, lot of shade, the shrubs underneath them are not happy, and ultimately, why would we want more when we haven't been able to take care of what we have? Not from lack of wanting to take care of it, but because we haven't been able to afford to take care of it. And I think that brings me finally to the, what I believe was the invalid premise this entire, we went on from the beginning, and that's that we need more.
One minute remains.
More, based on what? Based on how? How do we want more in a city that is as green as this city is? What I would propose is that we go forward with a green space plan, that we look for those areas that can be beautified, but that we not get all excited about the idea of planting areas in-ground in bulb outs, areas where people really do need to stand. I'd like to think that when I walk down Main Street and I run into one of you and we want to step aside to have a conversation, I don't have to step into a mulched bed to do that, we have very narrow streets, we have to find some balance in this, if we were to close down Main Street and create a pedestrian mall, we could have the most fabulous garden in the world on Main Street. I believe that we need to step back from this somewhat, we need to really consider why do we want to change the language in the downtown master plan, it's not the master plan's fault that we make mistakes-
That's Tom.
...it's not the master plan's fault, it's five people who voted at the table and made choices that they didn't have to make.
Thank you, we have ten cheats here, we need to continue on, Ms. Segal, then Jude Levy, and if Sandra Denu would come on down to the table too, we can move through these comments.
Springtime and time for dinner. My name is Coot Segal, and I'm here today on behalf of many of the downtown residents who have asked me to speak on their behalf. Being a minimalist, my architectural, design, and landscaping background repeatedly taught me that greenery does reflect beauty and a sense of soothingness. To achieve the ultimate, it is important aesthetically that current and future outdoor green spaces designed for downtown Sarasota minimalize hardscape, pavers, et cetera, and concentrate on B, T, and F, bushes, trees, and flowers. To quote a famous saying, "Beauty is in the eyes of the beholder." Sarasota deserves the opportunity to be recognized not only locally but worldwide as the greenery capital. Why? Why not? Let's make Main Street, et cetera, the street, who knows? Maybe one day, getting to the next page, we can reincarnate Frank Sinatra and his famous song. Sarasota, that great street, Main Street, do it right by listening to the residents' requests. Minimal, very minimal, hardscape. Maximum, B, T, and F.
Thank you, Ms. Levy.
Too bad you didn't have a vowel.
Good afternoon, Mayor Clapp, Vice Mayor Kirchner, and Commissioners. My name is Jude Levy, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Steering Committee of Sevar, Sarasota. Thank you for voting in June of 2008 to amend our downtown master plan to clarify that green space is preferred over hardscape. We're delighted that today you are considering finalizing that change in the language and in the city's policy. The city's downtown master plan states it is contained in a three-ring binder, just so that it can easily be amended when necessary. In the summer of 2007, residents came before the Commissioners asking for changes in the plan's language about green space, as we all looked more closely and discovered that the master plan called for streetscapes with a minimal amount of landscaping, whoop, that's right, this is it, as shown in this photo of Main Street just east of Orange. I don't think this is a place where folks will want to congregate in the middle of the summer, just guessing, this is very sterile and does nothing to create a vibrant downtown where residents and visitors would want to shop, dine, and stroll. Research has shown that people prefer to shop where it's green- Research has shown that people prefer to shop where it's green. This is even true in shopping centers, according to the research. So this is just half a block away in front of the Greek restaurant. Here are the shade trees and shrubbery providing inviting pedestrian ambiance. Although not shown, there are now adjacent café tables. In late 2007 and early 2008, over 100 emails and 40 phone calls were directed to the city Commissioners from citizens overwhelmingly supportive of more green space downtown. Over 120 people attended a city-sponsored green space workshop at Payne Park, with the vast majority speaking for green space. Save Our Sarasota believes the recommended clarifying language before you today responds to the citizens' request for a commitment to green space rather than hardspace. We urge you to adopt this language along with the proposed changes in the green space policies. Increasing attractive landscaping downtown beckons residents and visitors to walk the downtown. It will provide appealing frontages for outdoor dining and retail shops, which will help create the vibrant downtown we all desire. Thank you for your continuing commitment to green space.
Thank you. Ms. Denu, and next will be Kate Lohman and Barbara Campbell, if they could come on down.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Mayor. I'll make it short because a lot of the points have been covered, but I have a list here of some of the comments that were made by citizens in 2007 and '08. I worked with Save Our Sarasota for several years, trying to enhance the downtown with green space. And we elicited also a lot of comments. One of them is, "I'm a retired person with lots of time and disposable income, and I'll always seek out a pleasant nature-filled surroundings, spend my money, and linger for lunch or dinner." St. Armin's, which we all know well, demonstrates that developing a base of commerce does not arise from drive-by shoppers who dart in and out, comes from walkabout wanderers. And they are welcomed by a streetscape ambiance. Someone else said, "I patronize the independently owned stores on and around Main Street as much as possible because it's a pleasant place to walk in this shade." The others seem to say pretty much the same thing. I'd like to add that I no longer live downtown. I live out east. And there's actually no place out east where one can sit at a nice restaurant with greenery around. So I feel that you have an economic incentive to attract all those people, and perhaps people north of here as well, to come to this town, which would be so pleasant to be in.
Thank you. Kate Lohman, Barbara Campbell, and Jack Engel. Ms. Lohman?
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Kate Lohman, and I'm speaking for myself in support of the green space policy. There's been considerable public testimony over the past several years in favor of keeping and enhancing the tropical abundance of Sarasota. In particular, I would reference the meeting held at Payne Park Auditorium, where many, many people spoke of the importance of trees and other greenery in maintaining the charm of our city. At times, this issue has been cast as a controversy between residents and business. In fact, an attractive, vibrant downtown benefits everybody. It's no accident that Cee Lavie and Carigulo's outdoor tables are always full. Both have not only good food, but also very attractive settings. And at one point, I was having a conversation with Paul Carigulo, and he told me that when they had removed the greenery from the front of their restaurant in order to put in new greenery to replace it, that it immediately got much noisier and that people were less willing to sit up in that front area. So there you have a restaurateur who's really figured it out. The city and the Citizens Committee have worked hard to find common ground, no pun intended, and I hope you will adopt this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Campbell?
Yes, what I said before is pretty much what is on my mind. And I would urge you to adopt this policy, this green space policy. As I say, I think the city is just ready to burst open, and this really will be the icing on the cake. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Engel?
I'm Jack Engel, and I'm a downtown resident and a downtown lover. And I'm here to do whatever I can to support the green space proposal that is before the City Council today. What really impresses me about this proposal is the amount of attention that's being given to shade trees and canopy trees and trees and the shade that they cast, particularly in the winter, to continue them. The fact that we're even talking about this now is remarkable when you consider how far we have had to come over the last five or six years that I have been involved. Five years ago, the medians on Gulfstream Avenue were considered expendable, and there was a plan to actually kick them down and make parking spaces out of them, in some cases in support of a condominium building that was never built. A number of years ago, Five Points Park was thought to be expendable in the same way. The idea there was to pave it over and make a public assembly area. A number of years ago, other green space areas in the city of Sarasota were also considered to be expendable. We've come through all of that, and we have now a proposal before the City Council that is a product of a whole lot of public input and discussion and support from staff and a city council that listens. It's interesting enough that these two proposals come together. And the other proposal that I'm talking about, of course, is the Palm Avenue Parking Garage, which is also one that has been discussed on both sides with strong feelings on both sides for many years. And now we come to that proposal, which is now a fact.
One minute remains.
Yeah, which has had strong feelings on both sides as well, but has come to where it is because of a lot of public participation, a city council that listens, and a staff that is cooperative. So the bottom line of all of this, to those that are listening, is that Sarasota is no longer God's little waiting room. Sarasota is a city in Florida where the city council pays attention, and what seems to be reasonable and doable happens. And I thank all five of you for that.
Thank you. We have three more cards here. Arthur Levin, Susan Haglund, Peter Fanning, come on down. Welcome, Mr. Levin.
Yes, I'm Art Levin. I am a resident of downtown condo 1 Watergate. I was here in June of 2008 and spoke in favor of the green space. And I'm actually here today just to remind you that there are a lot of people who spoke at that time who've been waiting and appreciate that at the end of the wait, something real will happen. And I look forward to thanking you all at the result of your adoption of this green space policy.
Thank you. Ms. Haglund?
Good afternoon. My name is Susan Haglund, and I enjoy the downtown green space every day as I walk my dog downtown. I am here today to voice my support of the downtown green space policy. And relative to green space versus hardscape, I have noticed that people tend to congregate where there are green trees, shrubs, and so on. Some things that I like about the plan are the emphasis on canopy trees, retention and protection of existing trees, in-ground planting beds, required irrigation for new plantings, and irrigation with reused water, pervious pavers, and the use of Florida-friendly plants, also adherence to the fertilizer ordinance. A lot of my other points have already been covered, so I'll skip them. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I hope that you approve the downtown green space policy and adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fanning, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Commission, City Staff, I'm Peter Fanning from the Downtown Sarasota Condominium Association. I appear before you this afternoon in support of the recommended amendment to the master plan and the policy as it pertains to green space. Sometimes, as in this case, doing something slowly with a great deal of measured thought, gleaned from the best thinking of people most affected by change, is the most prudent way to travel, and Mr. Litchett and the city staff have accomplished that. This effort started several years ago with a request by one of DSCA's members, among others, asking for a change to the master plan to reflect a preference for green space as opposed to hardscape. Also included in this request was an expression to support an overall green space policy in order to bring consistency and coherence to addressing the quality of life of persons who live and visit downtown, while at the same time remaining cognizant of the needs of our downtown business community. The DSCA, through its members individually and collectively, and in conjunction with other parties having significant interests in improving the downtown environment, have taken the opportunity to provide input, listen to others, and communicate to Mr. Litchett and his staff over the past several years to finally arrive at a place where we can proudly say Sarasota has an organized and sensible approach to green space and hardscape. The DSCA wishes to express its support for a plan that contributes to the quality of life for all residents, visitors, and businesspeople, encourages people to shop, dine, and stroll in attractively landscaped areas, promotes a consistent and coordinated mix of commercial enterprise, which includes outside dining experiences where feasible and easy on the eye and psychologically relaxing comfort space. We appreciate this effort and ongoing commitment of the City Commission to promoting and expanding areas dedicated to environmentally sound practices of landscaping through responsible green space allocation.
One minute remains.
We look forward to your approval of the amendment and policy as proposed today. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all the cards we have. Commissioner, do we have any comments, or we've got five minutes?
I have some questions, the staff.
Okay.
Some small suggestions.
Tim, could you clarify for me? The plan, the initial plan is going to be with respect to the DID. What's the scope of the policy? Is it implicitly the master plan area, the downtown master plan area? In the green space policy here, there doesn't, from 2008, doesn't seem to have a geographic definition.
Well, you're referring to the Downtown Master Plan 2020, sir?
Start with the policy, the green space policy. What's the geographic scope of the policy? What's the intended scope of the policy?
Okay, I understand your question. I'm sorry. We did not specifically define the downtown area. We had some discussion of that, and basically, I think it's all the area that falls within the DID, but probably more expansive as we move along. Our idea was to start really from Orange Avenue, working our way down towards the bayfront, probably as far over as Fruitville, and then to the other side, Ringling, and then work our way from there as needed up. But overall, we do apply this policy also up Main Street. For example, anything that would be going on on upper Main Street also, we would be applying the actual policy. So I guess I'm mixing a little bit what I'm saying. The policy applies further. Our actual plan that we would develop initially would be the lower end. I'm sorry, I didn't say that well to start with.
And I understood. The plan, you defined specifically the geography that you planned, that you had in mind for the plan, but you don't define the geography for the policy, and that's what...
No, and we can. If, that probably would make that better to specifically lay out everywhere that applies to. That's something we can work on and bring back.
Okay. My second question is page three, the canopy trees are preferred in the public right-of-way. And I worry a little bit about implementation. And, you know, I, you know, shade trees are people-friendly, their, you know, canopy trees are people-friendly shade, they're cost-effective at carbon sequestration, they're cost-effective at controlling stormwater runoff, they're cost-effective at reducing pollution in our bay. I want to be satisfied that this is strong enough. And let me give you three examples and tell me how this policy would have influenced those three examples. The initial Five Points Roundabout was quite sparse with respect to canopy trees and shade trees. The Palm Ringling Roundabout design, the last I saw, had us moving three existing canopy trees, and the rest of it is all palm trees. And then the final thing is I did a rough calculation on the Fruitville rework, and 60% of those trees were palm trees, and something less than 40% of those trees were canopy trees. Now, I recognize that's not necessarily going to be where the plan will be applicable, but there seems to be a real bias toward palm trees. And I want some satisfaction that this language is strong enough to cause implementation to be dramatically different.
I will tell you this.
Let me just, it's according to that clock, it's 5 o'clock. Do we want to continue the discussion for a little bit, or do you want a break? I'd say break. I don't know what the group wants.
I don't have many questions. I think it's a function of our questions.
Yeah.
I just, you know, wait. I could wait. Five, 10 minutes.
Finish this?
Okay.
Yeah, I don't...
Okay, I'll try to answer quickly. I believe this language is strong enough. I think some of the examples you gave us are under the old policy, not this policy. That specific language wasn't in there. I can't speak to the specific dynamics of those three projects. I don't know what utilities went to each one and so forth. I really don't. But I think we have heard the Commission loud and clear. I think that Public Works, of course, you heard Todd Kucharsky participated on this committee. I think that we understand the cry for canopy trees, where they'll work. And again, they don't work everywhere, and that's why we say, you know, they're preferred. It's going to be a function of some of the engineering and so forth, but I think you're going to see, certainly my staff, and I know Public Works staff is looking now at, and relooking at all the different projects that have been in the pipeline with this in mind. So that's the best I can give you. But I do believe we've heard, and that's part of where we're here for, is to tell you we've heard.
Mayor, I have three or four minor language changes I'd like to suggest, but I'd like to give everybody else a chance to ask questions before I do that.
I just have a couple. I have a couple of questions on page nine, under policy language. And I have to say, I've been very mixed on this as far as how we work together on this. And I'm a case-by-case person, and I know that's just too easy to say. Can't life be case-by-case? Individual applicants that come in that we can... But I like a lot of the language here. It says here, "It is also important to promote commercial and pedestrian vitality," and in an appropriate, good word, you use general, you use should, well, should's not so great. "It's important to promote commercial and pedestrian vitality, and in appropriate areas, additional hardscape may be appropriate, subject to meeting the requirements of the downtown's green space policy." I guess I have issue with requirements, and you can't stick in guidelines or something else. I just have, I'm battling this because I see both sides. I heard Diana loud and clear. I've talked to many, many people about this. Obviously, I wasn't on the Commission, but I'm trying to look at how we can make this case-by-case. But is that something that can happen to keep? For the most part, you keep your words really good in general and preferred and...
We try, and that was actually a word that was discussed, the word guidelines or requirements. And I think the consensus of the committee was it was stronger if you used the word requirement. We want to encourage you in all ways to be consistent with the downtown green space policies and green space plan. I would tell you, in my opinion, in terms of applying it from a staff perspective, the word requirement or guideline, I'm going to be trying to implement the thing.
Sure.
I, maybe I'm missing the significance of that word there. Either way, I think to me, if you adopt this, we're going to be trying to do what it says as best we can. So either word's fine with me.
And then you say at the end of the sentence, "as may be amended."
Right. We anticipate, we just put that in there because we anticipate from time to time, the policies and the green space plan may be amended. We may have some tweaks and things like that that we bring back. We've just found that, especially with the policy, if we need to make some type of change like that, it's better to have that language in there.
Okay, that's just, it's just my concern with this, because I understand this. I think that...
Maybe a better way to say this is to change this document, the Downtown Master Plan 2020, we have to spend about $6,000 advertising. I have to go to the Crab Board, I have to come back to you two or three times, as you saw. So the policies are much more... So, the policies are much more flexible. That's why we say they can be amended, we can move those around, do different things to them as conditions may warrant, but this particular document, we really can't without coming back.
Okay. That's helpful to me, because you've done some great work here, and I just wanted to raise that question. Okay.
May I also, Kirchner?
I just, my concern, and one of the concerns that was brought up was as relates to greenery and surfaces where people can stand. I know on Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Way, we have problems with greenery and people not having someplace to stand, like even for, to catch the bus. So, I want you all to make sure and make us comfortable that the creation of these green spaces is going to give people opportunities to still stand and congregate under these trees, because I know you can't plant too much up under them. So, I think it's going to be important that that be said clearly upfront, so it won't be a conflict and kind of resolve some of these issues.
Yes, sir. And, you know, I would say that our language absolutely does that. We talk about, we recognize the vitality of both pedestrian and commercial areas in here, and I think they work together. I think the one speaker said, you know, people will come to an area that has some trees and so forth. You also have to have that area where they can congregate. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Way is an example of an area that we need to implement this type of a policy. You're right. We, well, you're going to see, as we told you in the CIP, we need to do some areas there. You've got a short, a small sidewalk, you've got an area where you've got a gutter, and then you have some little green space out here in the middle of the street. That doesn't seem to make any sense. It doesn't work together. There's nothing that draws you to stand, and it should. It's a beautiful walking community. We need to do this type of thing there, and I think it'll actually attract more people there. So, I think we're saying the same thing, sir.
Mr. Turner, you had a...
Yeah, on page four, under the green space plan, number three, the plan should promote, that's a pretty soft word. It ends with where feasible. I think where feasible just needlessly waters it down, and I would propose striking where feasible. And... Are you talking number two or number three, sir? Number, sorry, number two. I missed. Okay, number two, okay. So, you'd like where feasible out of there. Yep. And in number three, I'd like when possible out of there for the same reasons. And then on page nine, under policy, the second line, it talks about economic, environmental advantages and is generally preferred. I would like to strike generally. I think those kinds of soft words sort of create non-policy policies, and I think we need to be clear on this thing, this sort of thing. I'm sorry, that's on the second line? Page nine, policy section, second line, green space, starting with green space consisting of shrubs and plant materials, provides environmental, economic advantage, and is generally preferred. I would strike the word generally. Again, the notion here is that as much as possible, we should have clarity in terms of...
Clearly, I'll just say on the other two, I completely agree with this one. I don't disagree with, but that was, I will just say, that was one of the hard-fought words in our discussions.
I'm not surprised. So...
I like preferred. I get you. I like general is soft, and I like that, but preferred's a great word, too, so I'll give you that.
Okay. If there's consensus, I'd, are you ready for a motion, sir?
Sure.
Okay. I move that we approve Agenda Item 6.3 with the three revisions that I just suggested.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the Agenda Item giving staff direction on coming back with firm stuff. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
A mayor votes yes, approved unanimously.
Just one comment at the end. I don't know if anybody have, all you people that worked beautifully on this committee, saw the Southern Living magazine on Sarasota-St. Armin's. If anybody's here from St. Armin's Circle, it was on SNN. It's called Sarasota al Fresco. Sarasota takes its cue from Paris when it comes to outdoor dining. Bistro spill onto sidewalks. So, this is kind of exciting, what's happening up in St. Armin's and maybe downtown with all these new efforts and all these wonderful things that are going on there that will, you know, downtown will be in here. But this is pretty good for Southern Living. So, and they talk a lot about outdoor dining, so we want to keep that in mind.
Thank you. We will recess until 6:00.